It is six o'clock. All right. So what we will do is open the public hearing to discuss the water issue, which is a short-term rental in the town that has not complied with our previous or current ordinance regarding short-term rentals. Today is Thursday, June 29th. As part of the process tonight, if there's comments from the public, we'll give them an opportunity to speak. What we will do to start this off, as we know that Mr. Fortner is not going to attend, we are going to replay the comments that he made at our June 19th Town Board meeting. We have the video of that up there, so when we get ready, we'll share that just to give you all a refresher as to what their thoughts were since they couldn't join us this evening. As you know, it's been two years that they have gone since notification without any permits, including DAT cap and tourism. They did have a tourism zone permit, but they did not have a town permit. Also, as you'll see from all of your reading that you had from the 19th board meeting, there's also a copy of a cease and desist letter that was sent by our town attorney, Amy Sullivan, to tell them that they had to cease with the rentals, which they have done. So we'll watch the video, and then I'm going to ask Amy, who did most all of the correspondence back and forth with these people, to kind of recap the history, as much of it is well documented, and which you all have copies of. So who's controlling that?
I am.
So let's just replay that piece. You might want to turn those lights off there. Can you see that all right?
It's up there.
Well, I appreciate that because we are working in Canada for a few years. Not my plan, but that's the way, that's the way the wife takes you. So I just wanted to say a few things really. You know, I appreciate the communication from Amy. For my wife and I, I think fundamentally for the board, we had no intention to violate the ordinance. And we've been away for a few years in Canada. It's been four, actually, four and a half years. I've been, I've got a four-year anniversary in my company just a few days ago. So when this started, we were not getting mail. So the mail that was, I know there were letters sent to the house about hearings and questions and the ordinance, we did not receive it. So there was a gap in communication. And part of that's our fault to be, honestly. We had, over the years, we didn't receive any mail at the house that was really, really needed. And so initially, when we moved to Canada, we forwarded our mail, but then we stopped after six months. So there was a bit of a gap on our end. And so by the time we caught up with this, obviously, things, things had changed. The ordinance was approved. Things had been in play for a while. So it was a bit of a, bit of a catch-up for us. Also, Lundquist is our property manager. And we rented the house, I think, for three seasons, four seasons, maybe. And Lundquist, when we first started renting, they guided us through the process to get a license, wire testing and so forth. And we assumed that they would keep records. And if there's something we needed for that season or for the next year, they would notify us. I guess that, that's my mistake. They didn't do any of that. So they listed the property and took a handsome, I guess, a handsome commission. And just, just to be brief, on our end, you know, we've discontinued our rental operations. It's not beneficial to us as, as owners, quite frankly. It benefits the community more than it does us. And, you know, if you sit down and do the math, our only intent was, was ever to, just to help maintain the property. It's our home, and we're working away for a while. We just wanted it to be lived in and maintained. That was all. So we've, we've stopped rental operations. Lundquist is, has ejected us from their, from their website and the business. And we are owner occupied going forward. So since we're working away, the house will generally be empty other than, you know, when we're here for vacations or long weekends, that kind of thing. So my request is, you know, we're, we're not going to apply for a permit to rent. We're going to leave, leave the house empty going forward and just maintain it ourselves. And so my request is if we can, you know, we would accept a denial of the ability to rent in lieu of a, in lieu of a fine if that's acceptable to the board. But, you know, like I said, we had no intent to violate ordinances. That was not our, not our wish or desire to kind of circumvent any rules.
Okay. All right. Good enough. Thank you much. All right. So the key ingredients from that conversation. They are not renting any further. They expected their mail to be forwarded. No idea why or why not. Lundquist, Lundquist, their rental agent, apparently, at least they feel, did not leave them in the best of shape with respect to the responsibilities they had as a landowner, property owner. What I'd like to do is switch over to Amy for a few minutes and let her detail with you the conversations that she's had and what she has documented. And then we will have a discussion and any input from anyone here tonight. So Amy?
So we initially contacted all of the short-term rentals in November 2021 after the initial short-term rental ordinance was passed. And all of those short-term rentals were contacted via mail. So all of those were contacted. And then again, we contacted everyone in April of 2022. The initial contact in November 2021 was if they planned to rent from November 2021 up until June 30th, 2022. If they didn't plan on renting between that time, they didn't necessarily need a short-term rental license. Then starting, obviously, July 2022, those short-term rentals needed a license. So to kind of start that season in April 2022, I reached out to, again, all of those short-term rentals via mail because obviously, they were going to need license going forward. So we, we did that. The ones that did not apply were then contacted again in August. So I reached out to the forderers or their, their platform by making a fake reservation. As you can only reach out to that owner when you make that reservation because they won't let you message the owner until you make a reservation. So Lundquist reached out to the owners and had them contact me. And that's the way we started a conversation between the owner and myself. And so that's the way we initially started the process of potentially getting them a license. And that was August of 2022. We went back and forth. They seemed to start the process of getting a license or they just started asking random questions as in, you know, how would I go about, where would I go to seek the sanitary permit? And how would I know what my occupancy was? But there was really no follow-through when you, obviously, there was no follow-through because we didn't get anything as far as the actual application. So fast forward with everything else, it fell through the cracks. I will be the one to say that I didn't catch it. It, it fell through the cracks until this, going back through everything, and this spring. And I'm like, huh, they didn't, they didn't have a license. And so again, I followed up after we had the, we started the process again with updating the STR ordinance. And again, I did it the same way. Reached out, made a fake reservation, reached out to Lundquist. Lundquist was very shocked that I'm reaching out to them again, that they didn't have a license. And so reached out to them. And again, I was put in touch with Tricia. And we had a conversation about it. And it seemed that she had known about what the town of Sebastopol was working on as far as the new ordinance or the amended ordinance, I should say, and commented about that and how we were considering passing the owner occupied. So I had stated that, yes, the town had passed that as of April 17th. Then a cease and desist order did go out, as the chairman had mentioned, to the forderers. On April 19th, 2023, our attorney issued that. They then had come into my office on May 25th and asked, you know, what they can do to rectify this. And I add, asked at that moment in time, had they read their cease and desist order? Because their advertisement was still up on the web. They said they did. And they said, well, the first step would be taking that advertisement down. They said they could do it that day, which they did. Their nightly charge is $335 per night. Their weekly charge is $2,100 in 2022. And these are all numbers that I did get from Lundquist, so they are all accurate. In 2022, their occupancy that they were advertising was 10. Their pouts' occupancy is eight. So they had been, they had been advertising occupancy of 10 this whole time. So just keep that in the back of your head. So in 2022, the nights that were over occupancy, July 23rd through July 30th, they had eight guests. July 16th through the 25th, they had eight. So they're going back and forth here. So per our ordinance, the town has, so they had, let's see, they had seven nights over occupancy. And our ordinance, per our ordinance, the town has the ability to impose a forfeiture of not less than $100, no more than $1,000, plus the applicable surcharges, assessments and costs, including the attorney's fees for each violation. Each day the violation exists or continues, and that is each day. It constitutes a separate offense under the ordinance. I do need to mention, though, that the forderers did not have a DAT cap license for the year 2022. As soon as Lundquist realized all of this, they dropped them as clients because they were unaware that all of this was happening. So those are the facts that were all taken into consideration in bringing this forward.
Okay. Thank you, Amy. Want to address one word, one comment that you made where you said it fell through the cracks. It did not fall through the cracks, and that's a misstatement because it is not our job nor your responsibility to do the follow-up. So what we have done is a courtesy to try and prevent problems. But it is absolutely not our role or responsibility to take those actions other than the normal notification process. The expectation is that the owner has to follow through. And there certainly were written communications back and forth between the owner and yourself indicating that they knew there was an ordinance out there, that they started to take action to acquire a permit and DAT cap license and parking, et cetera. And they did not follow through. And that, of course, continued on into 2023. So just wanted to clarify that. Before we move on in the discussion, is there any comments from the audience? Hearing none? All right. So really, this evening, I don't think we have any choice but to consider a forfeiture as a result of their actions. I think it would be extremely unfair to the people that we've dealt with in the past and to any future short-term rental owners to not levy the appropriate fine, given the actions that they've taken. Although they may have felt, for whatever reason, that their mail did not get forwarded, their property manager didn't do their role or their job, et cetera, et cetera. And the fact that they're not going to rent in the future irrespective of all of that. I think it's our job to define them for the lack of follow-through on the ordinance. So my two comments, Amy's, you, as Amy indicated, the fines are per day. So there's a lot of latitude there in terms of where we're at. But given the, I guess, given the serious nature of the lack of action that they've taken, it should be, I think, fairly significant. So your comments. Whoever would like. Linda?
So if they indicated that they were not receiving their mail and/or email, were they also not receiving their rentals, less commission and other? Obviously, somebody must have been doing the reporting to the tourism zone. And somebody must have been remitting their share to them. So I fail to see that if they're saying they're not getting their mail. Now, understanding it could be auto deposit too, to a bank account. But you would think, once you got your statement, you would see that, oh, I'm renting and I'm receiving income, so I need to comply with our clerk's request and also the, the request to obtain a DAT cap license.
Dan?
Yes.
Did he actually say that they didn't receive emails? I only heard mail.
He just said mail forwarding. I think they, they received emails because we have a history of that between Amy.
So they, they retract emails. But he did state that he had not been receiving his mail.
Right. But emails.
And still, you know, if it expired or didn't expire, if you're any normal person, you're going to ask for your mail, wondering what happened? You know, why aren't I getting any mail? But I, you know, he did mention in the statement that Lundquist charged him a healthy fee. So obviously, they were getting paid, you know? Or they would not have had any fees. So who knows? Any other comments from anyone?
I just wanted to say that it's a substantial number of nights. I roughly added them up for 2021, 22 and 23. I can't find my notes here with the total, but I want to say it was like, I don't know, 300?
Well, some of it is exempt nights. So you have to exclude those. Exempt nights are 30, 32 night, 30-night rentals.
Oh, 30-night stays. Okay.
And we've taken, we've looked at that and, and taken that into consideration in terms of where we're going.
Looking at the report from the tourism zone on page 33 of our packet, that's what I, you know, rented nights, I just roughly added those up and came up with about 300 or so.
Mark, Derek, comments?
Where does Lundquist fall into this? Where is the liability in any of this?
I don't think there's anything in our ordinance that talks about the rental agent being responsible.
We talk about, we talk about these rental agencies in our ordinance all the time. But, I mean, they knowingly were renting it out illegally the whole time with the pouts especially.
I think.
So where, we need to start making them liable for some of this as well.
And in the conversation I had with our town attorney, she did indicate that we would have some, if, if we decided to go that route, we could. I think realistically, what's going to happen is that the owners are probably going to have to go back to Lundquist and deal with that issue. Whether it's valid or not, I don't know. But.
But I think part of our responsibility that we have that in here, that these rental agencies have to be part of our ordinance, that we need to hold them accountable as well. That's my thought. And I'm not saying they weren't, the owners weren't wrong, obviously, that, whatever. But these agencies, they're still making a healthy fee, and they have to know what's going on.
And I'm sure that if you went to Lundquist today, they'd ask you, if you rented, do you have a DAT cap permit? And oh, may I see it? And do you have a, you know? Yeah. But you're right. They should have known that ahead of time.
Well, and where's your, where's your, where's your license through your municipality?
Right.
But they, again, are they, at this, are they, is there anything in our ordinance that said they're responsible? I don't think so, is there?
It doesn't say they're responsible. They're saying they, that's one of the ways they can rent. You know, it says in there they have an agency, so.
Well, if you look at their application through the zone, they signed it. The onus is on the owners. Yes, I believe the rental agents should, you know, maybe walk them through that. Oh, by the way, you need a DAT cap license. You need this. But basically, it comes down to the onus. It is their responsibility, the owners, to follow through with all of the requirements. And like I said, their names are on the application, so.
Amy, did Amy Sullivan give us the attorney fees?
Yep.
She was mentioning.
She has not.
Okay. So we have to add that to whatever we decide. You know, if you take a look, and you need to look at the ordinance as well, but if you take a look at the nights that we had over occupancy, and the fee for that can be $1,000 a night, and we can step that up. There's a substantial portion or substantial fine in that area alone. And the fact that they had no license in 2022, rented it five times as a rental. Again, this is after she's been told she needs the permit.
You mean as far as there was actually email communication or some kind of communication?
Right. And that's in there.
So she can't deny that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay. You said they only rented how many nights in '22? Because again, if you look at page 33, there's some.
You have to take out the exempt nights. There's a, you'll look underneath the column. I think I got the same sheet.
Oh, exempt sales? Is that what we're looking at?
Yes, under exempt sales.
Oh, got you.
Okay. You have to back those out.
Back those out. Okay.
Because those are monthly rentals. And as you'll see, as you look down the column, you'll see where it's like 32.50, 32.50, so on and so forth. So that's a full month rental falls outside the scope. But still, inside of what Amy and was able to put together, he had seven nights over occupancy. Four stays before the warning of August of '22 at $1,000 a stay. So you'd have $4,000 there.
Plus the seven over?
Plus you have three stays after the warning in August. So you have the ability to double that based on the standard that we've done with Amy Sullivan and with the Holter Johns. So you'd have another $6,000. So just for the basic starting point, you'd have $10,000 fine. And then no license. And they rented it as a short-term five times. That could be $1,500 a time. So that could be another $7,500. So you could have $17,000, $18,000 plus attorney fees. Plus, we can also, if we decide, we can charge them for the lack of license or for the license fee, which would be another $550 for the two years.
Where are you getting those numbers from, Dan, for the, the 1,500s and the?
It's out of the ordinance?
Could, could you just recap again? Number of violations for over occupancy? Number of violations in 2022 and 2021? And how you come up with your total of $18,000?
Right. So it'd be anywhere from 100?
Please. Yeah. Talk to him to the microphone.
It's all right. I'm going to wait. Amy?
I don't see a 1,500 on there anywhere.
Go through your, go through your sheet on occupancy, nights over occupancy. But then, excuse me.
Go through my.
The fine component. What we roughly calculated.
What we roughly calculated?
Mm-hmm. So you had seven nights?
Seven over occupancy.
Seven over occupancy. Four stays were before the warning in August 22, 2022. So if, if we're taking the scale of, if we're following the scale of kind of what we, what Amy Sullivan set forth in, before, with the previous one, the first, the, the first tier, let's say, was $1,000 per, let's say, non, the first tier. Okay. So the, the first time. So we'll say $1,000. So we have four of those. So $4,000, let's say. And then we had three stays after the warning. So let's, let's say that those three stays, now let's bump that up to $2,000 because now they have the warning.
Each.
Each. So now that warning is now $2,000. So now we have that four, so we have $4,000 and now $6,000. So now that's $10,000. Okay? And so that's just the over occupancy part. Okay? So now we're going to take that, no license in 2022. So they rented five times as a short-term rental. Okay? So that's, that's pretty much all we can say. That, that's the amount of times. Now, you can say, you could say.
Each violation.
Each violation. You could say days. Or you could say times. I mean, you could say whatever you wanted to say. If you say times, you're, you're being very nice. You're being very kind. You could say days. So I'm, you know, you're being kind by saying times. So if you say they rented five times at, let's say, $1,500, which you don't, I mean, you could be saying five days at $1,000 apiece, you know? But you're saying times. Well, that would be $7,500.
Okay.
And I'm just throwing these numbers out there. These numbers don't have to be what they are. So if you took those two numbers and added them up, that would be $17,500.
Yep.
Now, Dan was saying, well, you could also add that they didn't even apply for those licenses. You could also add that those licenses could also be added on as a forfeiture as well.
The annual fee for 350.
Right. So you could.
300 and 250.
300 and then the 250 because they would have 2022 plus the 2023. So that would be 300 plus an additional 250. So 550. So then that would bring it up to 18.
1,050.
Yep. 18,050.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you.
Yep.
Plus costs and attorney's fees, publication, et cetera, et cetera.
Yep. That would be added onto there as well.
So I mean, you could, obviously, you could go to an extreme situation which you're not, I don't think we want to, and that's not our goal.
No.
So, but it could be as much as $1,000 a day, and you could calculate that off of every stay that they've had. You'd be in the 40,000 to 50,000 range, which is a little over the top. I think it's more than anybody would need a message to deliver, so.
Were there any complaints on this property via Granicus?
I do not know. Do you know?
No, there were no complaints via Granicus.
So we have to decide, we're going to find him, I assume? And what's the amount? Need agreement on that? Any discussion that you want to have? Up or down?
Just like you indicated before, considering fairness in the previous case, we've stated the numbers, and I would say it's 18,050.
Plus attorney fees.
Plus attorney's fees, publication fees and any other costs that we may have accrued.
Any other comments? I don't know who that was.
Well, just sadly, nobody, this, this board doesn't want to do this. I mean, we would like just people to follow the ordinance. You know, it's, it's, it's that simple. That we don't want to be doing this. We don't want to be doing this. It's unfortunate and.
Well, we need to take some action, so.
Rules need to be enforced.
Can we take formal action tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
So we would need to take a motion to decide to find them and what the amount would be. And then we would add that miscellaneous fees to that number, so.
Well, I guess I would make a motion that based on the information provided to the board and the previous communications between our clerk and the Forder's and their non-compliance, that we recommend a fine of, let's see, $1,000 for four nights of violation of over occupancy. And again, three stays after the warning of over occupancy at $2,000 each. So that's 4,000 plus 6,000. And no license granted in 2022 for five nights at $1,500 would be 7,500. Plus the 2021 license fee of $300, plus the 2022 renewal license fee, which would have been $250, for a total of $18,050, plus any out-of-pocket costs such as publication notice or whatever, and our legal fees.
Okay, we have a motion by Linda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Linda, second by Jeannie. For forfeiture of approximately $18,000 plus miscellaneous fees for the Forder's. We have a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion?
I, I don't understand where the $2,000 and 1,500, I don't see it in here.
The difference is, the issue is, I shouldn't say the issue, you have the ability to charge for $1,000 a day for each violation.
I understand that.
Okay. So if we decided to do that, we could.
I understand that, but when you say three nights at 2,000 and this.
So what we're doing is when, when someone's ignored what's going on, we've increased the amount. So rather than charge 15 or $1,000 for that day.
But that doesn't go to the letter of the law of the ordinance. It's 100 to $1,000, what I see in the.
Per day.
Well, I know that, but so we can't.
So if I either.
So the, to me, the, the way she worded it is incorrect because we say three nights at 1,500 and four nights at.
It should have been stays, not nights. With stays. So when Linda made her motion, I should have corrected.
You're right. It stays, not nights.
Stays and not nights.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry.
It's not exactly how it's worded in the ordinance.
No, I got you. You're right. It was, she mentioned nights, and I didn't catch it.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Derek? You're okay?
Yep.
All right. So we have a motion from Linda, second by Jeannie. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. The clerk will take the necessary steps to inform them, and the meeting, our hearing will, is closed. So, thank you.